In accordance with Governor Ramona's Executive Order 21-01, dated January 6, 2021, the Cumberland School City intends to conduct this meeting remotely. The public can participate in this meeting remotely, but not in person by calling 301-715-8592, Webinar ID 93769404315, or can join our Zoom session by going to the Cumberland Schools website and to the events calendar and clicking on the Zoom link. And I want to apologize for starting this meeting late. Our previous meeting ran over. So the first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, and you can remain seated. I pledge allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
The next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. And in compliance with Governor's Executive Order 21-01 dated January 6, 2021, discussion in our vote on whether there is public access to the meeting through adequate alternative means. I see 130 people. I think we have public access. Mr. Taylor, can you confirm? Okay, thank you. So we need a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mrs. Rogowski, seconded by.
I'll second. Sorry, one of the carries.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it seven to zero. And I just want to make a comment now that we do not have a vote on in-person learning on tonight's agenda. Mr. Mitchell will be giving us an update. He's not sharing the reopening, the whole reopening plan is going to give an update on where he is in developing that plan, but it is not on the agenda to be voted on tonight. I just wanted to let all the participants know that because I think there was some confusion. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Student Government Report. So, Mr. Mitchell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I believe Megan Carmark is here to give that report. Megan, are you here?
Yes, I am here.
Hi, Megan, welcome.
Hi. It says that I can't turn my camera on, but I didn't know if you wanted me to have it on for the meeting. But I can certainly just say it.
Let me send that back over to you again if you would like.
Okay.
If you get a pop-up.
There you are.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me all right?
I think so.
Okay. I'm going to begin now. Okay. Good evening, everyone. And thank you very much for inviting Student Government to speak tonight. My name is Megan Carmark, and I'm Vice President of the Senior Class and Secretary of Student Government. The feeling that I hope I leave with you all tonight is some optimism about how students of CHS are doing. After over a month of strictly online school, many of us, including myself, have returned to the halls of the high school for the last three weeks in accordance with the hybrid model. However, with many students participating in distance learning, students and teachers alike have clearly recognized that something very important is missing. The opportunity to be involved at school, especially in the recreational sense that after-school clubs and teams provide, has clearly become drastically hindered this year. And with more isolation than ever, staying connected with our peers is more important than ever. So, over the last three weeks, Student Government has tried as much as possible to create several innovative ways to increase school engagement, particularly over social media during this challenging time. First, I'd like to mention our YouTube series called Catching Up with the Clippers, which is edited and produced by our talented senior, Cristobal Bustos. We recently released our sixth episode today, and like always, we talked about everything going on at CHS. Some of the topics of our last few videos included a recap of our Virtual Spirit Week, a hilarious segment where we interviewed students and teachers about popular trends, an interview with NBC 10 anchor and CHS alumni Joe Caillada, and much more. Something we also made sure to include was an explanation of the upcoming course selection for the 2021 and 2022 school year. If anyone on the school committee has information that they would like to make into a segment on Catching Up with the Clippers, please don't hesitate to contact Student Government, and we'll be sure to make one for you. Aside from YouTube, we have also become extremely active on an app called TikTok. We created a school page where students and our very own teachers, like Mr. Curran, Mr. Hen, and Mr. Primiano, participate in dances and trends and have even gone viral. Our most popular video that we made last week has over 1 million views and 340,000 likes and counting. You should definitely check us out at the username Cumbia Hype House to see what we've been up to. In addition to TikTok, we've also come up with tons of activities to do over Instagram. Some of these included bi-weekly art contest, a guess-the-teacher quiz, and a weekly senior spotlight. The senior spotlight has been a huge interactive success. Every Thursday, one senior tells us about their favorite high school memories and future plans for after they graduate. It's a very heartwarming segment that we all look forward to each week, which anyone can participate in. If you're interested in reading what these seniors have to say, you can follow our official Student Instagram page, @ClipperPrideCHS. Aside from what we are currently participating in, we have a plethora of upcoming events planned. Some things to look forward to include a school-wide Mario Kart Clipper Cup Challenge, a baking contest against Mr. Hanaway, and our next biggest goal, which is the Genesis Project. Members of Student Government have been going around to local businesses asking for contributions to the Genesis Project in either the form of monetary donations or prizes that we will auction off at a fundraising event in the future. Our goal is to raise $10,000 by the end of the year, and 100% of the money that we raise will be donated to the Genesis Project, which supplies people in need with food and clothing from its headquarters in Manville, Rhode Island. If you believe you know of a business that would like to donate, or you yourself have personal connections, all of Student Government and the people of Rhode Island in need, be extremely appreciative if you could contact our advisor, Dan Curran. Lastly, on behalf of all Student Government, we would like to sincerely thank the community for their amazing turnout at our Angelo's fundraiser, which raised money for a local family fighting childhood cancer. The town of Cumberland surely knows how to come together and tirelessly contribute themselves to others in times of need. The support that we have witnessed from our student body and members of our community have been absolutely heartwarming, wonderful to experience, and memorable to be a part of. In Cumberland, we are persistent, we adapt, and ultimately, we always succeed. For a more concise version of what I just said, you can check out my column in the Valley Breeze that came out today. Again, thank you very much for your time and for inviting me to speak tonight on behalf of Student Government.
Thank you, Megan.
And thank you, Megan. I think you guys have been doing a great job of building school spirit. And I love the keeping Catching Up with the Clippers videos, which are really great. And, you know, a shout out to Mr. Curran for helping Student Government do all of these things. And yes, it's true, over a million views at Cumbia Hype House on TikTok. Mr. Collins?
Madam Chair, isn't it true that in addition to your duties on the school committee, you also moonlaid as a TikTok star in that very video?
I did try, yes, I did try. My video is.
You found stardom, don't let the fame go to your head.
Well, you never know, maybe some of these other school committee members could be part of at Cumbia Hype House, too.
I was just going to say, you know, thank you very much for this update, and my son is going to kill me for forcing him now to look at this, because this is all wonderful. I appreciate it.
And Megan, where can people find the Catching Up with the Clippers videos?
So, we actually have a YouTube channel, and the title of the YouTube channel is called Catching Up with the Clippers. And on this channel are listed all the videos. So far, we have six.
Great, awesome. Thank you very much, Megan.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have the Consent Agenda, which is approval of minutes from the regular meeting, January 14, 2021, approval of minutes from the executive session, January 14, 2021, and personnel actions. So I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, make a motion to approve.
Motion by De Monica?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Collins. All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it seven to zero. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is report out of the executive session meeting that was held just before this, on January 28, 2021, in a report out of executive session votes. We have no votes to disclose at this time, and I need a motion to seal the minutes of the executive session.
Motion to seal the minutes.
Motion by Mrs. Rogowski, seconded by Feather and Mr. Fiorello.
He said it, I just. Aye.
Aye.
Seven to zero. Okay, thank you. And the next item on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report. Mr. Mitchell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. The first item this evening, Madam Chair, is to recognize one of our custodians who is actually retiring tomorrow. Jim Marsland is a custodian who has been working for us for five years. He actually cleans the central office area of the building. So we, you know, got a chance to get to know Jim quite well. He is quite a character, really, he's a personable man, and we want to wish him well in his retirement effective tomorrow. The next item, Madam Chair, is related to the Happy Baskets Program. And I actually have a letter that I would like to read to all of you. I received this email from John Johnson. John is the Director of the Happy Baskets Program, and the Happy Baskets Program is an organization that raises money and provides food and toys for families in need. And as Megan just said, and she identified a number of things that the high school does, and I can tell you that the entire school system does a lot to help those in need. And I don't know that the community knows how much is done to support those in need. So I'd like to share this letter, if I may, very quickly, Madam Chair, that I received from Mr. Johnson. He says, "Amazing, simply amazing is the only way I can describe the difference that the Cumberland School System made in the lives of others over the holiday season. As the year went on, Happy Baskets had very few toys and empty food shelves, and we found ourselves in an uncomfortable position of possibly canceling parts of the program. And then, we got our Christmas miracle, and it was delivered by every school in Cumberland in the form of food donated by students, teachers, and parents. Because of the situation we all found ourselves in with the pandemic, we all had to innovate, and innovate they did. From Dan Curran and the student governments fill the truck with food to drive-by food drives. Very well done, everyone. With those donations, we restocked our food supplies, which made it possible to fulfill every request for a basket of food. In fact, because of your generosity, Happy Baskets gave away more food to more families than we ever have. I hope you take a moment to understand what your donation did and how many lives it touched along the way. So many people feel good because you all decided to make a difference. That's a really good moment to enjoy. You are why we at the Happy Basket Program are able to do what we do. You helped create smiles all over town, and you showed us all something about what it means to give of yourselves. We appreciate your kindness and wish you and yours a wonderful 2021. Sincerely, John Johnson, Director, Happy Baskets Program. I just want to thank everyone in the Cumberland School Department for their contributions to this very worthwhile cause. A special thanks to Dan Curran. We've already heard his name mentioned this evening by Megan. Dan Curran is impressive. He is the advisor for Student Government at the high school. And we want to thank Dan for his effort. I believe he might even be in the meeting this evening. I want to personally thank him for his work, his leadership. Thank all of the students involved in this very worthwhile cause. Not only was it the high school, but I want to thank everyone, the students, staff, and families in all of our schools for their contributions. You know, Cumberland steps up in so many ways, and I just wanted to make sure everyone knew that this is, I think, a great example, in addition to what Megan shared as to how Cumberland steps up to help. So, thank you all. Dan, are you in the meeting?
He is.
Okay, Dan, I don't want to put you on the spot, but, you know, let me just thank you and congratulate you for the great work that you are doing and the leadership you're providing to Student Government. Do you want to say anything?
I just want to say, thank you for the recognition. I appreciate it. I'm just doing my best. And Madam Chairman, I want to say your moves are very impressive. So please feel free to share more on the TikTok. But John's program is amazing, and there's no way we could have done it without the kids. The kids, the Student Government is just an amazing program, and they did a killer job. So, thank you, Superintendent Mitchell, for the recognition. I sincerely appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you. And the community, thanks you. All right, next item, Madam Chair, is the, you know, as you know, I like to provide an update as to where we are with positive cases and the impact that it has on our school system. Mike, do you have that document, if you don't mind putting that up just very quickly? And if not, it's okay. All right, great, thank you. As you can see, everyone, we have like a running list of dates where we provide you with information about where we are with the number of students who test positive, the number of staff who've tested positive, and those individuals in quarantine. And one of the things that is sometimes impacted, and I think Cumberland Hill is a good example, the number of school closures. And unfortunately, there are times when we also have to quarantine pods of students. But we just want, you know, to, you know, keep you informed of how each of these particular categories are increasing. And as you can see, you know, starting from November 18, when we actually started, created the spreadsheet and started tracking all of these numbers, you know, then they have increased significantly over time. The good news is, you know, any increase is a concern, but, you know, it looks, you know, the increases from last week are not as significant as they have been in other times. And perhaps there is a correlation with the fact that the positive test rate or result, positive cases rate in the state has, you know, is down below 5%. So I think that's an encouraging number. So just wanted to share that with everyone, and we'll continue to update those numbers as time goes on. Thank you, Mike. And the last thing, I just wanted to give everyone an update as to where we are with our move to more in-person learning. And I, let me just acknowledge that everyone, I understand that everyone is anxious for more information, and we realize that we have a responsibility to provide that. I also want, I hope everyone knows that as the superintendent, and I know that my fellow educators feel the same way, that we have a responsibility to, you know, get students into school more than we currently are. Because, you know, I mean, who would argue that, you know, the current situation may not be presenting some concerns around learning for our students? So our goal is to get them in as soon as possible. That being said, we understand that we have some challenges that we need to overcome. I want everyone to know that safety will always be our top priority. It will guide every single decision that we make. I also think it's important for everyone to know that we're not going to rush this. Like, I know that I talked about, and I apologize for any confusion that I contributed in the last meeting. I meant to say, we were hoping to get students back at the elementary level to at least four days a week in February. I want to, I said March, but I meant February. And then in my communication, I said February. So I know that that created some confusion. And right now, I don't want to state a specific date publicly, but I just want everyone to know that we're working on it. All of our administrators in all of our schools and the staff in all of our schools are working hard to address all of the challenges that we are faced with. You know, I'm sure everyone knows that there are, there are families that are on both sides of this issue. There are some parents, and I understand both sides. There are parents who are concerned about, you know, bringing students, more students back. And the opposite is true. There are, and it seems like more and more parents are contacting us, hoping that we will bring students back for more in-person learning. So, we know that, you know, I think just about every family right now has, you know, has an opinion on this. And I think the most important thing is the issue of safety. So, we've also been receiving emails from parents with very specific questions about, you know, some of the questions that have to be answered. And they really are more school-specific. So I would recommend that parents with specific questions related to their school, that they contact their principal directly. Because, so for, let me just give you an example. I just, this is one of the things that we talk about a lot. So one of the questions that has come up is, okay, well, what are we going to do about lunch? And the size of the cafeteria will, you know, determine how we're going to handle lunch. So, Community, the one of the largest, the largest elementary school in the district, has one of the smallest cafeterias in the district. Ashton, the smallest school in the district, has one of the largest cafeterias in the district. So the way that Ashton responds and the way that Community responds to lunch is going to be very different. So, and we've had discussions as an administrative team about this. If parents have very specific questions about their schools, then we are asking that you direct your questions to your child's principal. And we also agree that once we start to get more clear on a date for a return for more in-person learning, that each of our elementary schools, and we'll start there first, that each of our elementary schools will hold forums for families to answer any questions that parents may have about the return. So, there is, you know, still some work to be done. Everyone is working really hard. You know, like most things, things are never as easy as they may appear on the surface. But we're working at it, and our goal is to get students in sooner rather than later. But I also want parents to know that we're going to make sure that we give everyone plenty of time to plan accordingly, and we'll make sure to communicate where we are every step of the way. So, just an update, Madam Chair, and we'll be formalizing our plan as we move forward. We just ask that everyone be patient, and we're really working hard at trying to get more students back in school. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. If there are any comments or questions, Mr. Collins?
I have a question about the ventilation. Our original ventilation study was based on the hybrid model. Have we begun the process of looking at ventilation for the capacity of full in-person learning?
You know, that's a great question, Mr. Collins. I think that is one of the questions that will come up quite frequently. So I would answer that question this way. Given the work that was done on the ventilation system at each one of our schools, what has happened is we have been able to provide the maintenance needed to our UNIVENTS so that some UNIVENTS are meeting that goal of four to six air exchanges per hour. So, the newer UNIVENTS are providing the four to six air exchanges. So we're meeting that goal. So there, my point is that there are, because of the work that we did, there are some classrooms and workspaces where students and staff meet that meet that goal. For then, there are those spaces that weren't, we weren't getting four to six air exchanges per hour. That's where the air purification units come in. So, those classrooms that will have a full classroom of students, the air purification units provided by the state, and we got 300 of them. So in those places where the four to six air exchanges are not being met, we are putting, we have already put in those heavy-duty air purification units that provide four to six air exchanges per hour. There are also, there are also some office spaces and some smaller rooms that, you know, don't have large numbers of students or staff. And those spaces, and offices are a good example, we can use the air purification units that we purchased that provide two to four air exchanges per hour. So, I'm glad you asked that question, and we're going to have to repeat this over and over again. The good news is, given the work that the school committee approved and the fact that we have these air purification units, we are in a place where we can bring everyone safely back to school and meet that particular requirement.
Can I just follow up, Madam Chair? The only other question I have is, I know it's early, and well, I know you've been thinking about this, and I think it's, I think the public is, you know, excited. Many people are excited, and some people are naturally anxious. But what obstacles in your early, in your early planning, what obstacles do you anticipate that are going to be the challenge, that what the obstacles we have to overcome to get us over the hump and potentially get the kids back into school? Because we have a lot of frameworks in place that are great, ventilation being the one you just mentioned. But is there anything on your radar right now that we may collectively have to address? Or obviously, the public has to be prepared for it?
Yeah, well, I think there are a lot of things that have to be addressed. Certainly, ventilation is one. And as I said, people are going to need to hear that again and again. But another, one of the big things that we know that we are going to need to address is transportation, right? Because there's still a limit as to the number of students that can ride on a bus. So we're going to have to figure all of that out. And just so that you know, so that's one of the things that's happening right now. The bus company is going to be providing some data to us within the next week or so to let us know how many students are currently riding the bus now. So. um, within the next week or so, um, to let us know how many students are currently riding the bus now. So um, transportation is going to be, um, an issue. Um, distributing lunches to everyone is going to be, um, an issue. One of the challenges is always going to be social distancing. So we need to make sure that we are meeting the social distancing guidelines. And I hope everyone knows that there's no way that the, um, six-foot social distancing, um, recommendation that comes from the CDC. Um, there's no, there's, there's no school in Rhode Island. I'm telling, I, 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 I would, I would guess um, that is meeting that requirement. But we, our goal is to meet the, um, three-foot um, American Academy of Pediatrics, uh, guidelines for social distancing. So that's the goal. And, and in a, in a, you know, and, and that's not going to be easy. In every single, um, school, I, I would say in most schools, there's just one I'm a little concerned about, but, but we're able to meet the, um, the three-foot social distancing guidelines. Um, at least it looks good, um, at this point, but, but there is still a, a couple of places that we need to, um, do some work on. So those are the kinds of things, Mr. Collins, that, you know, we wanna, we wanna be crystal clear on where we are on each of these things that, that comes up.
Mrs. Regalski?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I know that surveys, it's, it's only been a few days, but do we have any idea how the surveys came back that were sent out to elementary parents?
Yes, we, we, um, have some, some really interesting data and, and one of the things that has surprised me, and there are principals, um, you know, in the meeting, and certainly they can, they can speak up, but one of the, and, and Mr. Demana and his team, they are working really hard on this as well. One of the things that has, um, been interesting to me, like, I, I, if I had to make an assumption as to how people would respond, like, I would have thought that there might be more parents interested in distance learning. But the opposite is true. That it, it appears that some of those families that had initially decided to do distance learning, they, are choosing to return to school for more in-person. Now, the numbers have not changed significantly, but, um, but there's, so there, there's been a slight change, but, so we, we, one of the challenges is to try and balance the, the number of distance learners and the staff responsible for accommodating distance learning and then, you know, staffing the students who will be in school. So, so I, I think, I think w- we have some pretty good data right now, um, Ms. Regalski. And, um, as soon as we get that a little more organized, we'll be sure to share it certainly with the uh, school committee and the community at large.
Any, um, other, yeah, Mr. Collins?
I don't want to monopolize the questions. I want to give everybody else a chance. Um, but since nobody raised a hand, I will. Um, one of the questions, I, I, I don't know if you have any information about this. There's been some kind of misinformation regarding, I think one important thing, at least in the minds of many teachers, is vaccination. Um, they were at the front of line, n- next, now in the back of the line. Have you heard any information from, uh, Department of Health or Ride about where teachers are going to come into play and what that time may be? And if possible, will they be able to be tested, I mean, pardon me, vaccinated on site?
Okay, so, good question. We, um, we have been hearing, uh, in our superintendent's meetings that, and in fact, um, our association has written a letter um, to, um, the governor. And as we know that, you know, there's, we're in the process of transitioning, um, there possibly. And, and, and the commissioner, um, is in favor of moving educators, up, uh, in the vaccination line for a lot of reasons. I mean, certainly, you know, the safety of educators is, you know, the most important thing. But, you know, the, the thinking is, you know, well, if we can get teachers vaccinated and back in school, we can get all of our children back in school and that will have a positive impact, hopefully, on the economy. So um, nothing definitive, but there is definitely a movement to move educators up, uh, on the vaccination line to get them vaccinated. And, and I think, you know, um, I think you may, you know, people have heard that, uh, Lieutenant Governor McKee, um, and, you know, and very likely soon to be governor, um, he, he has um, stated publicly that he fe- that he believes that educators should, um, be um, vaccinated sooner rather than later. So, and, and there are, just so that everyone knows, um, there are regular meetings, uh, in the town to, um, plan, you know, the, the, um, to develop a vaccination plan. The school, the, the school department has to be a part of that because, you know, all of the residents of Cumberland at some point are going to have to be, are going to have to be vaccinated and the school department's probably going to play a role in that. I've already had some preliminary meetings with folks about that. Um, but to answer your question, I apologize for going on, on this. Um, the hope is that educators will be moved up.
Mr. Fiorella?
I, I understand we keep saying educators. Is that also including uh, support staff, custodians, uh, food service, bus drivers and monitors? Basically, everyone involved in working in the school system?
You know, I, 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 that, my response is an assumption. My assumption is that that would include anyone that has anything to do with any sort of contact with students on a daily basis. So um, I'm like 99% sure it is all certified and non-certified staff, but I, I, I can't imagine that, you know, that, you know, bus drivers and monitors and, um, you know, um, anyone else that's in, has day-to-day contact with students and large numbers of adults in the school system wouldn't be, um, also a part of, of that group that gets vaccinated sooner rather than later.
Okay, um, Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Mr. Mitchell, if you could maybe, taking it a little further on Mrs. Regalski's question, a, a big component of the concerns that we're hearing from parents are the possibilities that their children are going to have their teachers changed. And I'm just wondering if this is more related to those distance learners who may be wanting to go back into the school, uh, if we do go back four days? And that impact is minimal? Or are we looking at that in, in further detail?
All right, th- th- that's a fair question. And, and I, I think, I, I, I don't think. Our goal is to minimize uh, the disruption as much as possible. So, I, I, I am, I, I cannot state publicly that, you know, we can, we can guarantee that everything is going to stay exactly the way that it is right now, because I, I, that would not be fair or accurate. So the goal is to minimize the, the, any disruption to the lives of families and students beyond what we've already had to deal with, um, as a result of this pandemic. So so I can't be definitive, but I can tell you that our goal is to, um, is to, to minimize that. And one of the things that we're thinking about, um, and I had a conversation with Mr. Demana today and some of, uh, his staff about, you know, some possible options that we will share with all of you to consider. And, you know, I mean, some, you know, there are, oh, some of the options always include money, which, you know, is always a, is always a challenge. So I, please know that our goal is to minimize, um, any significant changes in the lives of children, students and their families. And, um, but, uh, in, in all honesty, there may be some changes that have to happen.
Any other questions at this time?
Mr. Collins, you don't have any more question?
I do, but I, uh,
I'm only teasing. I'm only teasing. The questions are good ones. The, the questions-
Yeah, I always have questions, but it's all right.
I know, I know you do.
That's why we let you go first. You answer, you ask all of our questions too.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't let you talk anyway.
Um, one of the concerns from some parents is that if they choose to stay hybrid, would they still be allowed to stay hybrid?
I, I, I don't know that that is possible. I, I, I wouldn't right now rule anything out. I mean, we've had some conversations about how we could possibly do that. I, 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 I think there's a way, but I mean, there's a, there's a lot of work to be done there. So I, I, I would never state publicly, yes, that's something we can do, or no, it's, that's not something that we can do. I think everything's on the table and, you know, that's one of the things that we discussed today. I mean, we, and, and it's really going to take a team effort here, um, to, um, get students back and, and minimize any disruption in the, in the lives of, of our students.
Yeah, and one of the good things, Mr. Mitchell, I think, is that there are a number of districts who already are at four or five days a week with elementary kids. Like Lincoln has been that way since September. So I think there's a lot we can learn from how other schools have managed the same issues, transportation issues, lunch issues, classroom spacing issues. Um, and, you know, hopefully learn from that and be able to adapt. So, uh, Mr. Mitchell, at our next meeting on February 11th, do you think you'll be in a position to provide a more detailed plan?
Well, certainly that will be the goal, Madam Chair. That will be our goal.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for your update, Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is reports of standing committees. And the first one is the Fiscal Management Subcommittee update. Mr. Demonica?
Uh, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, we did meet tonight and, um, the Fiscal Finance Subcommittee got a report from Mr. Prignano, our business manager, of what our presentation may look like next Monday when we meet with the, uh, Town Council in the joint meeting. We, um, have some, uh, invoices to pay for some of the security work that was happening at the high school. We got an update from Mr. Will DeJesus, our facilities manager, in regards to where we stand district-wide with repairs and stuff that's been happening. Um, we did have an issue with North Cumberland that got resolved fairly quickly. We have a cold snap coming in the next few days and this weekend. And so we've adjusted the, uh, the boilers to run more often so we don't have any bike freezes. As you're aware, most of the schools are now have glycol in the system, so we should get through this with no problem. Yeah. Excuse me, and we got an update from, um, Mr. Prignano and Mr. DeJesus about possibly, um, asking Ride for a change in the scope of work for the $3 million bond. And, uh, doing some of the univent work at the high school, considering the amount of money that we spent, um, repairing everything in the elementary schools, um, to get them up and running. So, uh, it'll be something they're going to go out and try to get some pricing on and bring it back to the committee and then see if the, uh, Rhode Island Department of Ed is feasible to actually make those changes. So we'll see. The re- the report was the, for the 83 million was done a few years ago before this COVID came. And you know, we did a lot of work at these, uh, univent leaders, univent leaders running so that when we do go back to school, we do have the, the right amount of air exchanges in each classroom and throughout the building. So that's where we stand in the Fiscal Finance Subcommittee meeting and we'll have those resolutions later on during the meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Demonica. Next is the Policy and Procedures Subcommittee update. Mr. Fiorella?
Policy and Procedures did not meet this week. Uh, we will, will meet, um, in a couple of weeks.
Uh, next is the Achievement and Communication Subcommittee update. I can give an update on that. Um, it was our first meeting with our new member, Mrs. Regalski. So Mr. Demana gave an overview of the Assistant Superintendent's Office. And so we can all understand the role that his office plays in really kind of analyzing student achievement and being able to put the right things in place to help improve achievement across the district, especially for our mediest, um, students. And then, um, they took us through a lot of data, looking at schools and how we assess students, both, um, through Rycast, but also through other assessments that happen in school. And, um, you know, the, we talked about the predicted impact of the hybrid learning model, um, the distance learning model on what achievement levels might look like in this spring. And, you know, that, that's pretty stark. Um, I think there's, you know, there's, there's a big impact there. And, um, which also led to us, you know, as we think about the next school year and the next budget year, thinking about interventionists and other essentials teachers that we may need to try to add to the budget to help, um, reduce, um, the impact of that, you know, that the pandemic has had in, in how everyone's learning. So that's, um, that's what we covered this week. Uh, the next item on the agenda is the District Health and Wellness Subcommittee update. Mrs. Regalski?
Thank you. Yes, we did not have a meeting yet, but thanks to Mr. Fiorella, I have an updated version of the draft policy that they began working on before COVID, um, to make some needed changes to the policy for the school district. So we have that in hand. I'm meeting on Monday with Ms. Carbonic and Ms. Malcolm to go over everything that was started and get kind of caught up to date. And I'm also setting up a phone call with Karen Weatherill from, um, the state to go over the needed policy changes. And she's going to give me kind of introduction and bring me up to speed on what the requirements are for the state. And then we'll move to a meeting from there.
Awesome, thank you. Uh, next on the agenda, agenda is comments from the public. Um, and so as usual, um, say your name and your address. And there is a three-minute uh, limit to public comments. And I'll ask Mr. Fiorella, um, if he could keep track of that again. So if anyone, um, would like to, to comment, you can raise your virtual hand. If you're online, um, or star six, unmute yourself on the phone. And Mr. Chandler, I'll look to you to see if we have anyone.
Okay. We have a few hands up now. First one is, uh, Kate Carlson.
Okay, welcome, Kate.
Good evening. This is Carrie Carlson. I live on Newell Drive in Cumberland. I am also a middle school counselor at Court Middle School and North Cumberland Middle School. So thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight. We all know that this year has presented educators, administrators, and those making educational decisions with many challenges. And one of those challenges we talked about tonight, which involves the balancing the benefits of in-person learning against the risks of spreading COVID. And I realize there are many, many considerations. And there are some things that I would like you to consider further. Um, for several weeks, Rhode Island has had one of the highest average daily case rates in the country. As of today, Rhode Island was third in the country with 69.2 cases per 100,000. However, only a few weeks ago, Rhode Island topped the list and had the highest average daily cases in the nation. There are new variants of the virus and immunologists predict that by March, the spread of Covus will, in COVID, excuse me, will increase dramatically due to these variants. The number of students and adults having to quarantine and the number of positive cases in the Cumberland schools continue to rise. Um, we didn't see as large an increase recently, but that could also be attributed to the fact that we did have distance learning following, uh, our recent vacation. According to the CDC, the number of children and adolescents with COVID-19 is increasing and more children are experiencing inflammatory symptoms. We have many school employees that unfortunately have underlying health conditions or live with people that have conditions that put them at greater risk for COVID. conditions that put them at greater risk for COVID. Throughout this pandemic, experts in the medical field consistently urge people to take steps to protect themselves from this deadly virus, including wearing masks, staying a minimum of six feet away from people they do not live with, avoiding crowds and large gatherings. If we bring more students back to school four days per week, we can't meet many of these guidelines. And students, as well as faculty and staff, will be at increased risk for this deadly virus that has killed over 429,000 Americans and over 2,135 Rhode Islanders. In an effort to learn more about school safety during the pandemic, I took a look at the updated, um, information on the CDC website. And the CDC rates opening strategies in terms of risk, our current hybrid model falls into the medium risk category. Full in-person learning falls into the higher or highest risk depending on certain factors. Personally, I feel that medium risk is risky enough. And I urge the administration and the school committee to delay changing from our current model of hybrid education to full in-person until after educators have been vaccinated. Now, the argument I frequently hear in favor of in-person learning is that is what's best for kids. And in many ways, I totally agree. But I wonder if the people making that argument are also considering safety. Because when you're in the midst of a deadly pandemic, safety should be the guiding factor. We can't always do what's best in circumstances like these. That's why people stay away from friends and family. They can't visit their loved ones in nursing homes. They can't always go to their places of worship. They can't enjoy the leisure activities they used to enjoy. Because when it comes down to it, protecting our lives is what's best. So returning to full in-person learning when COVID's risk is minimal or over without the lo, without the loss of life, that's what's best. So, I agree that safety needs to be the priority. And it can't just be the safety of the children, but it has to be the safety of the adults that also work in the buildings. And I would hope before we take any steps to reopen, we give adults the opportunity, like we're going to give parents to have their questions and concerns answered. I would hope that there would be forums for educators as well. Because there are a lot of people who have concerns about their safety and their well-being. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Carlson.
Uh, Mike Hartley. Should be back now, Mike.
Sorry about that. Sorry about that. Uh, so my name's Mike Hartley and I live at, uh, on Scott Road. Uh, I spoke at the last meeting in, in favor of the four-day-a-week-in-person plan. And, uh, I have two boys, uh, at Ashton Elementary, um, in kindergarten and first grade. And I just wanted to, uh, kind of just reiterate my stance and, um, and say, you know, since the last school committee meeting, my kids have had only four days of, uh, direct instruction by their teacher. Um, and since we went to the hybrid model in October, this, I, I think this was like the fir, the 41st day of, that they've gotten direct instruction. And if we don't switch to the four-person, four-day-a-week, um, in-person model, that, I don't thi, we're not on pace for 100 days of direct instruction. So, um, I, I do think that is important. Um, and that's all I had to say.
Thank you, Mr. Hartley.
At this time, nobody else has their hands up?
Okay. Um, we will move on to the next item, um, on the agenda, which is under new business. And the first item there is the Superintendent's Search update. Mrs. Dickinson?
Good evening. Um, this should be brief. I have good news in the progress of the, um, of the posting. So tomorrow morning, the Superintendent's, uh, job posting will be posted on, um, our website on School Spring, and I will be sending it to a national publication um, for a 30-day posting. Additionally, I have contacted neighboring, um, our, so Superintendent's and Principal's Association, um, direct, or Superintendent's, uh, Association Director, who shared with me that he would be willing to distribute it in the state as well as in neighboring states' superintendents associations and principal associations. So, um, I believe that we are getting a really good, um, area, uh, wide, wide net being thrown, um, for candidates. And I look forward to reviewing. Um, the second piece of this is that we will also be publishing a Google Form tomorrow on the website and posting it on, um, our Facebook, um, account, which is looking for, um, uh, stakeholder interest in serving either on the search subcommittee or a, um, a focus group, uh, who can provide information as to what, uh, characteristics the community is looking for in the next superintendent of schools. So that will be also published tomorrow. Um, so that we can start looking at that, um, building a profile for the superintendent as well as, um, as creating the subcommittee, um, moving forward. So I'm excited about the progress and I look forward to, um, getting it out there. Any questions?
Does anyone have any questions from Mrs. Dickinson? No? And, and maybe, Mr. Mitchell, you can include the link to the Google Form in your weekly communications up to the community?
We'll do, Madam Chair.
Excellent. Very exciting, Katie. And so we're gonna post this, um, for a month? Is that our plan?
30 days. Yep. I look, yeah, 30 days. Yep. A little over 30 days, actually. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Katie. Um, the next area, uh, on our agenda is discussion and or vote to approve resolutions. And I could, um, well, Mr. Demonic, uh, do you want to speak to these?
Yeah, I'll, um, take care of these, take them in order. All right. So the first one is SCPR 01202102. It's a resolution empowering the Cumberland School Committee to approve the second payment to ADS Construction, Inc. for the high school security project in an amount not to exceed 124,940.32 cents. We have, um, paid a, um, requisition form signed by the architect, signed by Colliers International, since they're reviewing their work. And everything is in order. It, it is a progress payment. Um, the original contract was 658, so this is the payment number two of what we'll owe them. So, I would move, it passed in the Fiscal Finance Subcommittee and I would move passage, um, tonight.
And Mrs. Demonica makes a motion to, um, pass for payment, payment number two for the CHS Security Project to ADS, ADS Construction. So we have a motion to make that payment. Um, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Collins, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it seven to zero.
Okay. Next one is SCPR 01202103. It's a resolution empowering the School Committee to approve payments for Torado Architects of Providence, Rhode Island for additional cost estimating recommended by Colliers International for stage one and stage two submissions for the 75, 79 million dollar bond issued not to exceed $8,000. What this is, is, uh, to better get a handle on what the cost would be for certain items. The ar, architect normally sends it out to a third-party, um, company that will do a professional review of the, of the work to date and the plans and estimate the cost of what it would be from a year from now or two years from now, whenever the work was gonna start. Um, they did one already. They did a second one. Colliers International suggested they go out and do it again. This is a pass-through reimbursement. The amount is $8,000. Torado Architects, um, has, um, paid for this and it's reimbursable. And I would move passage. It's been signed off by Colliers as well in regards to the payment. So I would move passage of the payment not to exceed $8,000 to PM and C.
Okay, Mr. Demonica makes a motion to make payment for cost estimating to Toronto Architects. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I will second.
Second by Ms. Smith, all in favor?
Aye.
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 The ayes have it seven to zero.
Next is a payment SCR 2021-01. A resolution empowering the Cumberland School Committee to approve payments to Colliers International Providence for owner representation services for the months of November 2020 through January 2021 in an amount not to exceed Colliers International is the, uh, company that represents the town to review all the work going on and make sure everything is done and followed correctly. The invoice has been signed off by Colliers, uh, Harley Demir's, and I would move passes in the amount of $40,224.83. And it did pass in fiscal as well.
Okay, Mr. Demonica makes a motion to make payment for the owner representation services to College International. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Collins, all in favor?
Aye.
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 The ayes have it seven to zero.
And-
In the left. Yeah, go ahead.
Item number C is discussing the end of vote to approve payment of bills. Uh, there were no, um, payment of bills for approval for this night.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Demonica.
Thank you.
Um, we are, we are at our second comments from the public. Um, so, Mr. Chandler, are there any, any people raising their hand?
Yes. Mike Kinch would like to speak.
Mr. Kinch?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Thank you. Just quickly, first, I want to thank the committee for holding Monday's Budget Preview Meeting. I think that's gonna be a big help as we go into our, uh, February 7th joint meeting. So, uh, thank you very much for that proactive, uh, meeting. Uh, and second, uh, our, our agenda for Wednesday is not uh, firmed up exactly, but we do have a place on it for an update on vaccines. So that might be something that you, uh, some of you folks might be interested in. Uh, so I would just check the agenda when we get that, uh, that out.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Mr. Kinch.
You're welcome. And that's all I got. Have a, have a good night.
Okay. Thank you. Any other?
I do not see anybody else at this time.
All right. Thank you. Uh, the next item on the agenda is School Committee Comments, School Liaison Reports. Any comments from any members on the school committee?
Just one, I know it's not in Cumberland, but I'd just like to say I, as, uh, for that young, you, young hockey player, Bishop, Bishop Feen in Attleboro, hopefully that he'll be, he'll fu, he'll be fine going forward. So I know the whole country is watching this and hoping for the best. And, um, let's hope it works out for him. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Demonica. Any other comments from the school committee? Um, I would, um, I would just like to challenge Mr. Collins to the at Cumbie Hype House.
You win. You don't have to go very far to see my TikToks. Occasionally I do them with my daughter and but you win. I'm not, listen. I'll fall on the sword for my, I'll fall on my sword, on the sword for the students, but, but you, you might find a better dancer. You, you might find a better dancer in the group than me. So.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments in the school committee? Mr. Fiorella?
I just want to mention that there's a, uh, meeting of the Cumberland Special Education Advisory Committee on February 2nd at 6:30 PM. It'll be a Zoom meeting, of course. Uh, if you go to the C, Cumberland Special Education Committee Facebook group, uh, you'll be able to get the link for that meeting, I'm sure. Otherwise, you can, uh, inquire at the Special Ed Office. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. Next on the agenda is, um,
We had one-
Amy had her hand up.
What? Oh, I'm sorry. Who was that? Oh, Mrs. Rogowski, you're muted.
It was me. Um, I just wanted to take a second to, um, recognize all the parents that took time to write emails to us. And I'm sure everyone else has gotten. I think I'm up over 60 emails this week. So I, I really do appreciate hearing from parents. And I, I appreciate all of you taking the time to share your thoughts with us. And I know that maybe not everyone feels that way, but I really, it, it's quite helpful to hear how people are feeling. So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mrs. Benson?
Just want to second that. Thanks, Amy, for bringing that up. Um, and the other thing I just also wanted to mention was that everyone was super, super respectful. And I thought that that was amazing to see because I know that this can get to be quite a heated, um, conversation around town. So, um, all the emails I received were, were great. So, thank you.
Mr. Demonica?
Madam Chair, I just wanted to, um, bring this up. Yesterday, uh, our athletic director, Erica, Eric Blanchard made note of the fact that the cameras are now up and running in the wellness center for, for anybody that wanted to log on and watch a basketball, I think he said, boys' basketball right now. Uh, they filmed the first game the other day. And it's live, so parents can, uh, log on, or grandparents from around the country and see their, you know, grandson, um, play basketball. I know there is some type of little subscription for it. I don't have all the details, but he did say it was live and, uh, that's a good thing. So, with COVID and people can't attend, uh, they'll be able to watch those games. So, maybe the, uh, website can get updated with that link for that. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Any other comments? All right. Then, uh, the next item in the agenda is to vote to go into executive session. Do we have executive session tonight, Mr. Mitchell?
No, we do not, Madam Chair.
Okay, um-
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Fiorella, second?
Second.
By Mr. Collins and Mr. Demonica, all in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it seven, zero. Our meeting is adjourned at 8:29 PM. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.